I'll talk.
Bradley Benson, building official.
He'll be the, okay, he'll be the new building official.
Yes, sir.
Okay, very good. And where, where you coming?
Uh, Phoenix, Arizona, but.
Oh, just down the special north side of the country, right?
Yeah, I was actually, I was with City Regiment for ten years.
Oh, wait, then you know, then you wouldn't live in the south of the country.
Yeah, yeah, I, I was actually born in Alexandria, Virginia, so I'm a Virginia guy. Uh, well, you know that stuff you see about the border on TV?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Well, it's ten times worse.
Yeah, I've got, we've got family in Scottsdale, I go there, so.
Yeah, yeah, I have family there actually too, in Phoenix, yeah.
Well, it's not as bad there as it is closer to Florida, bad.
Well, that's what they say, but they all get to Phoenix.
Yeah, they all get, yeah.
Yeah, you get to Phoenix.
There's a song about that.
Probably.
To, um, roll call, Mr. Kitchen?
Yeah.
Ms. Banks?
Here.
Uh. Ms. Copeland? Mr. McLemore?
Here.
Um, Mr. Grizzard?
Here.
And myself, here. All right, approval of the agenda, can I have a, a, um, motion to approve the agenda? All right, any discussion? All right, call for the vote, all in favor say aye.
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 And aye, thank you very much. And, um, budget discussion, I guess we're on to city manager.
Well, before y'all get started, I did want to take the opportunity to introduce some staff people you all may not have met before. Um, the first person is Bradley Benson. He is our newly hired building official up in the community development department. And if you have not had the opportunity to meet Kenya Harding, she is one of our code enforcers.
Very good.
Thank you.
We, we're glad to have both of you. Yep, yep, all right.
And so, there was no planned agenda for tonight, you just wanted to have an extra day to talk about the budget. So, this is for you all to discuss amongst yourselves.
Okay. You, you're done with your presentations?
Yes.
Oh, I thought, I thought you needed more presentation.
No.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
That if we did not raise taxes, what services would be hampered?
Um, that's hard to determine, it really just all depends, um, let me do it this way, because I did prepare a staff to say that you all will be discussing the budget tonight, and that there will be some possibility of, um, some discussion, because council may desire not to, um, do a tax increase, although, um, there really hasn't been that much feedback in terms of come back with some alternatives. So, let me put something in real quick and see if we can discuss it from there.
Okay. Musical accompaniment. Ms. Copeland.
And so, as this slide indicates, this would be our fourth discussion regarding, um, the budget and the possibility of trying to reduce or eliminate the tax increase. And so, first I want to start with how did we get here? Um, as you all are aware, especially when we had our one-on-one or two-on-two meetings, I shared with council that we know that, um, it was shared by our financial advisors that because of the debt obligations that the city was facing, that there was going to be a need to increase, um, revenue in order to meet those obligations. And so, your biggest, um, revenue generator is your real estate tax. It brings in about seventy-seven thousand, seven hundred and seventy-five dollars, uh, per penny when that revenue comes in. And so, because they did not make any decisions regarding that, there was no gradual increases to the real estate tax. Um, you also know that, um, based off of their advice, there could be the potential of not only the increase this year of four cents, next year of four cents, the year after that of four cents, and then the year after that of about two point five cents on the real estate tax. And so, some other things that brought us to this point is that there was unsustainable methods that was used to balance the budget. And some of those things included, um, just reductions in departments, uh, without really eliminating any type of services. Um, elimination of positions, you eliminate the positions, within compound amount of work that people have to do, and you're doing it with less people, which then could lead to complaints about the number of, um, how long it takes for staff to respond, things of that nature. And then, um, there was also the reliance heavily on transfers from the enterprise funds, which really wasn't sustainable. It was to the detriment of those, um, departments having to start draining their fund balance in order to be able to, um, meet the obligations and stuff they were trying to do for the, uh, general fund. And so, there was also too, the use of fund balance for reoccurring expenses. I give you an example of that, I think that when the city did its, um, compensation plan, uh, at the time, there was no money to fund, given the raises, so council then agreed to pull money out of the fund balance. But again, that was for a reoccurring expense, and so that's not sustainable, so that just was kicking the proverbial can, uh, down the road. Um, as you are aware, that when we started this budget, we had a five-point-eight million dollar deficit, and I equated it to seventy-four point five-seven cents on the real estate tax. And some of those things that led to that was the increase in debt payment that we were seeing. Uh, we knew that there was going to be some increases to support. Uh, we knew that, um, I was gonna recommend to stop doing that transfer, because it was hurting those enterprise funds. Um, there's some GASB laws that have changed, and one of those is that, um, compensated absences, that we now have to carry on our books as a liability, and that equals to about nine-hundred-and-ninety-three K. And then, we had some increases in our shared services and, um, our regional commitments. And so, I worked with staff to do some reductions, so there would not be that much of a burden on taxpayers. But we got it, all of it down but to about four percent, which equates to about three thousand, three hundred and twelve thousand dollars. But we eliminated a whole lot that we, we, that could have shown up as part of a tax increase. And so, like I said, tonight, we're gonna present some options, and advocating for one, one way or another, um, to help or even for, to start some discussion for you all to have, to be able to possibly talk about either reducing or eliminating the tax. And I would just say again, as a word of caution, um, these recommendations do not address it in the long term. There's still gonna be some needed deep discussions to have regarding that. Um, some of them are not sustainable. Again, we're gonna have to come, decide whether or not, there will be some things, and I do have departments working on it, where if things were to reduce or eliminate in terms of services, I mean, a percentage or something like that, what would that mean for services? How will we be able to maintain that? And again, it's just gonna continue to kick that proverbial can down the road. And so, when we talk about, um, reducing or eliminating that real estate tax, this is only for the general fund. It does not affect, uh, our enterprise funds. So, what you see listed here before you are all the areas that, based off of these options, that, uh, could be affected one way or another. And so, um, let's talk about those options. So, the first option is, is that there could be across-the-board cuts. Um, you could say we're gonna target a percentage that you would like to cut out of the budget. And let's say, for example, if it's one-point-five percent, then that would yield three-hundred-and-twenty-four K, which would, on the positive side, eliminate the real estate tax. It would keep the employee compensation that you all had said you wanted to do for employees, but the, um, negative downside to that is that this is an additional reduction to the department. This is an additional burden on those departments and the general fund. Um, and it, and it's going to vary by departments, because it depends on the size of the departments. For some people, it could be anywhere from, from two thousand to five thousand dollars in reductions, up to almost a hundred and fifty K out of someone's budget. And so, with most of our departments in the general fund, it's mostly bodies that are providing that service. So, you're gonna see a diminishing of quality of service, you may see a, um, diminishing response in time, especially if it's affecting public safety, uh, police and fire. Uh, we could see some job loss, more turnover. I know you all hear about the ones that report directly to me, I don't talk to you the ones that go further down into the organization where we have turnover. Um, diminishing in employee morale. Uh, we already have, um, infrastructure that we know we need to upgrade and be on top of, but if I don't have the personnel to do it, then it's gonna cause more derogation to that, uh, infrastructure. And then also too, like I said, you saw community grants was on that list, so there could be community programs that could be affected, not only provided by the nonprofit, but also by our departments that provide those services. Um, a second option is, we could do a combination, you can increase the food and beverage tax and, and still keep a percentage on the real estate tax. The food and beverage, we got some new numbers, so that would, if we increased that by one percent, that would bring in an extra hundred and fifteen K. And so, that equates to about one-point-four cent reduction you can take off of the real estate tax, but you still need, uh, an increase of two-point-five-two to make up that difference. And the positive part with that, again, it reduces the proposed real estate tax, it keeps the department whole, it still keeps the employee compensation. But the negative side is, is that it doesn't eliminate the real estate tax all the way. And then again, it imposes another tax, even though it's a, the, the bill's tax, it's a transitory tax, and it would get anybody who stopped in Franklin, um, to purchase food and stuff. But it, it at least would, um, spread it out, but again, it would just bring more complaints out from residents.
Smaller amounts, smaller amounts, instead of a thousand dollars extra on your real estate bill, you'd have a extra two or three dollars on your restaurant bill.
And, and, and.
Or not even that much.
And maybe that's something too, I could bring back to you to show what the impact would be to a household with that increase on that real estate tax, based on the assessment, so that way you can see exactly how much it is, instead of just saying, someone saying it's gonna be an extra thousand dollars on my tax, or it's gonna be an extra this on my tax. You really know what it could be if a house is assessed or valued at this. Um, could also look at a business in the downtown district to say, okay, in the downtown district with the new, uh, tax, this is how much it would equate extra for said business in the downtown. Here is another combination that you could do, you could do the meals tax and still do across-the-board cuts. The meals tax, as I said before, would bring in a hundred and fifteen K. A one percent would yield cuts on the departments to about two-hundred-and-sixteen K. Again, positive, the meal tax is transitory, it lessens the impact to the, um, general fund departments by imposing it with the, the cuts with the, um, food and beverage tax increase. Again, still keeping in that employee, uh, compensation piece. It eliminates the tax, uh, increase, but again, the complaint could come again with the food and tax increase now being proposed to, to happen. Um, this proposes an additional reduction to the department still as well, as I stated before, about diminishing quality of services, job loss, morale, could affect programs and things of that nature. And then, here is four, you could just totally eliminate, um, employee compensation. There'll be no three percent wage and no living wage adjustment. And with this one, like I said to my staff, if this was eliminated, then any of those state-funded positions that also are receiving three percent, I would not recommend giving it to them as well, because that would just really hurt morale amongst staff. Again, this would eliminate the proposed, uh, real estate tax increase, but again, it will widen our regional, um, compensation gap and our competitive edge. Um, it affects all the departments, and again, we're talking about, it could be diminishing quality of, um, service, um, reduced productivity. We could see a higher turnover rate, because the region is providing increases, and they also have steps. And then, it can also, um, increase this engagement. So, this one, I wanted to share with you all, because I think that when we, generally when we talk about the schools, we talk about the bottom-line number that we see, and we say that this is what we have to provide. But I want you to pay attention to the yellow arrows, and I gave you all copies of, um, this form before, and I have updated ones with the schools saying what they think that their, uh, projections in terms of ADM is going to be. But what the yellow arrows represent is the required local match in programs that you have to provide. If you do not see a yellow arrow, it is not, um, required. And so, I don't think that we ever went into this discussion, because again, all we do is we talk about this bottom-line number of, um, and I'm just gonna look at two thousand and, twenty-twenty-six, which is a far, uh, one on the right, which is a four-point-nine million. We always just go to the bottom and say, this is the number that we have to meet. So, and this isn't, all of this is part of the state calculation that the state provide when they are doing the numbers for the schools. And they, and, and I will say, it does say on the documents, and you all have copy of it too, that these are the numbers that are used to do the calculations, to come up what the particular funding should be for the schools. The schools have the option of putting it to where they need to be at. But if you see from this sheet, your required local effort for these programs, which is basic aid, textbooks, vocational education, gifted education, special education, VRS, social security, group life, English learning teachers, early reading intervention, and SOL, algebra readiness, this, you have to provide at the two-point-nine million dollars for them to report and say that you met the required local effort. And here's why this is key. On another report, where they have to fill this out as a summary to say, have you met, um, the requirement? You see that I proposed for the budget, four million, eight-hundred-and-sixty-six thousand, five-hundred-and-ninety dollars. When you take out what your required local effort is for SOQ accounts, it leaves one-hundred and, one million, eight-hundred-and-ninety-two thousand and sixty-two dollars that's available for all other programs, that is part of that calculation that comes with the state determining what they need for those areas. And so, you will see that even for the Virginia preschool initiatives, it says, if you intend to opt out of this program, you enter in zero for the local match. So, that means that the schools have the option of doing it at the full amount to do the match rate, or at the small amount, but it's a discussion to have. And so, this also applies to, um, other areas, and I'm not gonna get into the numbers, um, here tonight, but this is one of the things, if you know for FY twenty-five, I'm working with the schools, to try to figure out what that additional amount needs to be. But if you look, like, these two, for your at-risk, your early read and specialty initiative, your K-three primary classes, math reading instructional specialist, um, compensation supplement, um, infrastructure and operations per pupil, uh, Virginia preschool initiative, additional funding and special ads add-on. They can adjust these numbers in the, the, the funding that you all recommend, as long as it is meeting the required local effort. And as you saw, based off of the proposed amount that's there now, you are exceeding that requirement. And so, this is just to show you, summarize without all the, uh, colors in between, that, um, for those, uh, programs that is not part, that is a non-SOQ-funded program, right now for twenty-six, um, it's a local match, they need about one-point-nine million. Based off of what I proposed, they're getting about a one-point, a little bit under, uh, the one-point-nine. That's why I told you about the, uh, increase that we saw last time in our last presentation. At that moment, I wasn't recommending moving up to give them anything else, because I know that within a year, we can go back and review that, and then again, we, we, we would be looking at how much money we provided for the required local match to make sure we met that versus the non-SOQ-funded positions. I mean, not, non-SOQ, um, programs. And so, the positive part with this, if you was to talk about doing some type of elimination with this, you could almost make a recommendation of the actual amount that it would require not to increase the tax rate to eliminate the real estate tax. You can all, by doing that, there is no new tax on the, uh, meals tax, you wouldn't have to propose to do that. It will lessen the impact to the general fund departments, and again, it keeps the employee compensation option there. The negative side is that it will reduce the amount of funds they have available to provide a match to those other programs. And again, it could increase complaints, um, not only just from the schools, but also from the public as well. And so, as a recap, um, what you would be looking for, if you wanted to look at eliminating the four percent, the four cent on the real estate tax, which equates to three-hundred-and-twelve K, I gave you five options. One is across-the-board cuts to the departments, which would equate to, to the general fund departments. I gotta stress that, to the general fund departments. It would equate to three-hundred-and-twenty-four thousand, eighty-nine dollars. If you do a combination between the meals tax or food and beverage tax and real estate, then a one percent will bring in a hundred and fifteen. Uh, you still would need from real estate about two-point-five-two percent increase on that. There is a combination where you can do the, the food and beverage tax and across-the-board cut, so you're looking at about, again, a hundred and fifteen K from food and beverage, and then maybe a one percent from the departments, which is, uh, two-hundred, bringing, which will reduce it by two-hundred-and-sixteen K, eliminating the four cents. Uh, you can also just eliminate the employee, uh, compensation altogether. And then, you have in terms of the non-SOQ-funded programs, about one-point-eight-nine that you could reduce down, um, and have the schools have to adjust on what programs they, they want to provide. With that, I'll leave it to you all to have discussion.
Um, go ahead, go ahead. Would you go back to the, what, the SOQ, which, which programs are SOQ? Oh, I see, done. Thank you very much.
And you will see on this sheet that the schools did, um, adjust down their ADM in terms on what they was projecting. I think the state has it at a hundred and thirteen, um, kids, and they put it in a, um, I mean, one thousand, a thousand and a hundred and thirteen, you're right, and then they have one thousand fifty-seven is what the schools adjusted it down to.
Were the system saying they're, they're at one, eleven, thirteen?
Right, right, and down the last February, a report, and I gave you all a copy of that report, it had at one thousand one hundred and thirteen students.
So, it's even higher than this?
Right, and they reduced it down, figuring that, because they, it tends to go down anyway, when the founder numbers come out in June, um, they're just underestimating it.
I like number two the best. That's the combination. Coming down a penny and a half roughly, from what we'd proposed. I don't wanna see any cuts, oh, for the city services, I don't wanna see any cuts to, to compensation, I don't want, or benefits for city employees, and I'd hate to see, as much as I think the school system wastes money, these are some of the most needy portions of their budget. Vocational ed, gifted education, special education.
Keep in mind that these are just headers.
Right.
And I say that because, again, and even in the school, um, in the state calculations, the schools can use that money basically to fund the programs the way they wanna fund the programs.
Right. We give them a block amount of money, and the state gives a block, state fair gives a block amount of money, they divide it up.
The only requirement is that they have to have the match for those required local effort programs.
Right.
The ones in yellow.
Thank you. You mentioned kicking the, um, kicking the can. I think of it as a, what, what pictured in my mind was a full can when it starts, and that can gets more and more empty as it furthers going down the, down the road. Another thing I, that I think of from police and fire days, well, I've never done fire, but, is that the, as you cut personnel, y- your overtime goes up, because you have to have people on the street, you have to have people to respond.
This is true, and I also think that prior councils, um, took a commitment with the fire department by increasing their positions at least like, by at least two or three, um, over a certain period of time. This year, there was supposed to be three additional positions added to the complement for the fire department, but I did not recommend that.
Which means we'll fight, need five next year.
Maybe, maybe not.
Potentially, yeah. Splits it up.
Yeah, yeah, I think it splits it up, well, I don't think it does split it up, and I would hate to see ICAC have to take a hit. So, um, leaning towards two, this wheel.
Who else? Mr. McLemore? I see the wheels turning.
I trust you and Ms. Grant know what to do.
Todd Johnson, Mr. Kitchen?
I think a combination of two and five.
Do both of them?
Yeah, I didn't present a whole bunch of, uh, combinations, I know I could've done that, but you could.
Mr. Grizzard?
Okay.
I'll lean between what Mr. Kitchen said, um, we could do two, but reduce the real estate sum to lessen that burden, but also take a little bit back from the schools. I know it's bad to say anything about the schools, but, um, they can tighten up a little bit like everybody else is.
I think they can tighten up a lot, but it, it's, unfortunately, it's in the areas that they don't wanna, that, that, I, 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 I think the central office is where it needs to be tightened up.
And, and let me also say this, as I shared with you all, we don't know what the final outcome of the June number could be. At the worst, it could be the one thousand, one hundred and thirteen. If it is that, I think your SOQ funding goes up to about, uh, three-point-five or something like that. But remember, we're budgeted at four-point-eight. So, then that would mean that they may have some reduction in their non-SOQ program, anyway.
Yeah, I could certainly live with Mr. Kitchen's, I like, I like that idea. Um, I, I, I wanna be, I, I know, we, we have no, no control over the money once we give it to the school system unless we categorize, unless there's a categorized something, but, um.
Which you all did agree.
Right.
And I did share with them that you all won't, that you all would be doing this appropriation by, uh, classification.
Sure.
So, any changes across that, um, we'll have to come back for your approval.
I, I, I think.
Um.
Go ahead.
Nick, have, have you finished, Mr. Mayor?
I, I'm not, but go ahead.
Uh, my question is, what are we doing? Because basically, we've had, I've been on the council. we've had, I've been on the council for nine years. We've had, um, advisors, Davenport, to tell us what to do with the budget. The last several councils did something different. So you're pulling money from other places. Now you can't pull that money from other places. So if we don't get this together financially, we'll be in the same predicament as several other cities that the state has come in and taken over, uh, the city government, where the people stayed on council would have no power, no say. So it's critical. And I know a lot of, a lot of us have gotten calls, some individuals, those same individuals are the one that has put us in this predicament today. In the same predicament. So I, I'm tired of going over this and saying cutting this, cutting that when we need to do four percent. We need to, we, we need to tighten up our budget and do what we need to do to get the city in order. If not, the state will come and take it over.
I don't think we're in that. I, I'm familiar with what you're talking about, 'cause I know what happened in Petersburg and, and Richmond both that I know of, but, um.
That, that, uh, I haven't finished, Mr. Mayor.
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought you were.
There has been a scenario out, and Mr. Macklemore can refer to this, uh, uh, about, um, the county, people in the city wanting to go back to the county. That will never happen because the state would come and take us over. What we have to do i- is be cautious of what we need to do for ourselves. And it's fine, you know, what you're saying, take this, cut this, cut this, and you know, but realistically, we need to look at the fact of moving forward and doing, if you're paying an advisor, what was it, fifty thousand dollars a year, something like that? Uh, if you're paying a financial advisor to advisor and that much money, I think you should take their advice. Other people, we, uh, for nine years, we've done this, and I have preached the same sermon. And people have done things differently. And that's why we're in the predicament that we're in.
Yes, okay. What I'm, that's why I suggested number two at, from the, at the beginning, before we came up with the idea of doing a combination, because it would give us the same amount of money, but just putting it in two different tax categories. We'd have the same amount, we still get our four pers, four cents basically. We're just getting it from meals tax and, and it, it, now, we can't raise regular sales tax, can we? Are we limited on that?
Yes, we are.
Okay, so the meals taxes are, is our, the only option, one, when it comes to, to a sales tax type.
Right, and I did, I looked at the sales tax to see if that was one we could. But based on the, um, Virginia State Code, the way that it's written now, we don't, we, we reach the cap.
Yeah.
So the only way that, um, I do know that there are some localities in Virginia that can add an extra one percent, but they petition the General Assembly to be able to do that. You probably will have to do the same thing as part of your legislative package, but it wouldn't affect this year's budget if he was granted that.
Well, I hate to say this, but I will say it. I don't know why I hate to say it. The people that have reached out to me and have come before council seem to be the people that can afford it the most. And the people that probably are gonna struggle the most to pay the increased tax have not, have not reached out to us particularly. In the va, in the, with as loud a message as, as, as those that, that can.
And they never do.
And I don't wanna pick on somebody 'cause they've done well. And they, I, I'm certainly not trying to do that, but it's, um, it's, um, it, it, as Dr. Johnson said, some of these people have been on council in the past, and they have been very vocal, very vocal.
And, and that's why we're where we are today.
That's right.
Point blank. I'm sorry, but that's the bottom line. And if we don't have the tenacity to move forward and, and do what we need to do, we're, we're gonna be in the same predicament.
But we are moving forward.
Hit the little up button.
To me, we, we are moving forward, we're just potential options. It doesn't have to be on the, uh, real estate tax, it's, it's additional options.
And also, I don't think it's fair to say, because we assume that these people have it, we don't know that about all cases. And number two, you gotta think about what I said at the last meeting. What about someone who wants to invest in real estate? Like someone who is about to purchase a home. So I'm not thinking only about the people who we assume have the money to pay the extra real estate taxes, but the people who might want to purchase a home or real estate property. So I think it's fair, um, to just kind of divvy it up across the board. And that's just me.
Go ahead.
I'm not to point fingers, and my apologies to Vice Mayor Cope and Mr. Macklemore and Dr. Johnson. The kicking the can down the.
A backup if something, something unexpected happens.
And that cycle has to change, Mr. Mayor. If not, it's called what? Insanity.
That's right. It does if it, if you don't make changes. So again, I like, I like number two because it, because it mixes the, the, um, the hit, to those making, buying real estate or owning real estate. Yeah, and it's, it's harder on somebody that has paid their mortgage. Is if you're, if you're making a mortgage payment with an escrow, it goes up a few dollars. But if you're, if you're not, then you have that big hit twice a year, and that's, that's more painful.
I'll wait till Mr. Kitchen get back.
I, I do wanna say this, I think that we had a, um, non-agenda, not a non-agenda, a, a person who spoke during citizens' time who compared city services to county services. And, um, I caution against that because although the counties are able to keep their real estate pretty low, they also receive a lot of funding from the state. And the state also handle, uh, responsibility for those services. Like, we're responsible for our streets. We may receive some type of reimbursement for those portions that are considered, um, highways, so we get something from the state. Um, but other than that, for all our secondary roads and things like that, we are totally responsible for that. We pay, we also have a school that we have to pay into. Um, I know that the county does as well, but it's not to the tune or to the rate of what we do. Is that there are a lot of services that come with being a city that you are solely responsible for, that, um, the counties do not face.
That's right.
And, and I agree with, um, the city manager. Those examples that came up were all counties.
Every one of them.
No, every one of them, no cities. Cities operate different from counties. We have more services. We have more responsibility, a- 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 as the city manager just pointed out. So you can't use that for an example, even where Southampton gave a rebate back, because it, it, it doesn't work. It doesn't work for us.
Yeah, I think that was my response too.
Yes. We have the four, you know. As long as we get the four, that is important. You have to do that because what are we gonna do next year? You know the cycle, what we need to do. Everybody's been aware of that, what we need to do for the next three years. If we don't do that, we're in trouble.
We almost need the four cent and the meals tax, but
Correct.
splitting the difference would be, would help.
Correct.
I know, Ms. Macklemore has something to say.
Well, um, I think that we're looking at it from a, um, totally wrong perspective. First, these are four options, five options presented to us. Do we, who have to make the decisions and are supposed to be discussing it, do we have any recommendations for options? Or this is it? Pick one. Well, I picked two, I picked five. Have you got your own heads? I agree, Ms., Mr. Johnson, that I've been around when they were talking about us going back into the county. That's true. And there are people who wanna do that. The reason for, some of you may not know because you're new here, is the reason why is because two of the biggest expenses of our city are the law, the police department and the school system.
Social services.
So, well, school system and no, social services actually makes us money, brings us money in. But the police department cost us, and, um, if we went to county, the county would be responsible through the sheriff's office for the police protection. And the school system would be under Southampton. So that's why people wanted to move back to the county. Uh, I almost not disagree, but not agree either. I don't know, maybe it might be the better thing for the ci- state to come in. Because we can't seem to make the decisions necessary to operate our city, in my opinion, sufficiently. And why I say that is because we don't have a plan. We looking at three hundred and twelve thousand dollars is what we're short. Oh, we need to raise a four cents, then we gotta raise a four more cents next year, and then we gotta near it again. What we need is to raise the revenue that the city generates. When we do not charge people who should be paying revenue, such as Suffolk charges, when Carnival comes, everybody, most all childrens go there, they ride rides. They charge them an admission tax on that. The city makes money. We send out electric bills every month to people. I think, I could be mistaken, but I think it costs us something like five thousand dollars a month in postage. Multiply that by twelve. How much money are we wasting in postage when we could save money by sending, going to electronic bills? Of course, everybody can't go computer. I understand that. But if we could cut it by three quarters, we save money. If we could find ways to generate money, we talking about selling off land. Instead, other cities are taking land and they're leasing land. So they still have ownership and they generate revenue. So when we, every year after year, and Davenport, they come in and they tell us, well, if you borrow this money that you want, then you're gonna need to, and our advice is that you raise your taxes by this amount and then by this amount. Yeah, they tell us how to meet the obligation. But I said financial advisors, I said it many years ago. How are you advising us how to make some money? If we don't make money, then we have no choice, we're passing on to the city. And if this council is not sp- be strong, stand up and assist that we start cutting where we can, cut wasting money, and start insisting that we collect money and make money, then I don't think we're in a dilemma where we have to cut school funding or we have to cut across the board. We can give our employees. I think it's pitiful that the school board with their money, and their money is limited. They got, they get it from state, federal, and us. But they have a limited amount of money. And somehow, their part-time employees, part-time employees, get a two hundred, a, a hundred and twenty, uh, 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 one thousand two hundred dollar, I think, a bonus every year. Part-time employees. Full-time employees get four thousand dollar bonuses. Because their leadership makes sure that they spend their money. Now, I don't necessarily agree that the students may need more money, but the management, the management, it, what it, what it comes down, how we manage our money. Our, our employees, part-time and full, you know how much they got for bonuses? A hundred dollars. Hundred dollars. We have taxing power. School, uh, schools don't. We have all kinds of methods to raise money. We don't. But this body, all they look at is recommendation, okay, this is our choices, okay, we'll take it. Or which one of the, which, which is the lesser of the evils? I say that either come up, either come up with other alternatives as council people that are not there and say, well, can't we try this? And after we have put our heads to the grindstone in ways that we can a- address that three hundred and twelve thousand dollars, then we're leading and not necessarily following. So I can't say in good conscience, pick two and five or three. That's a cop out to me. That's what's been, here's some choices for y'all, pick one. No, our job is to come up with answers. And these aren't necessarily answers because they are potential options. But this is the first thing we've looked at, and we're ready to make a choice without digging in deeper. And also, finally, I'm gonna wrap up with, before Ms. Oglesby came here, I spoke to her and I told her we needed to do a forensic audit. If you don't know how much money is in your pocket to pay for something, how can I tell, how can you ask me for more money? You might have enough money to pay for what you need. But if you don't do the audit, first, and here we have ju, we, we have, we're just starting it, seven, eight months down the road, we don't know what we have. Where's the money from the, the, the cemetery funds? There was money, when people buy a cemetery plot, there was money put into the cemetery fund that was supposed to pay for the upkeep of the cemetery. But we've been using Public Works to upkeep the cem- cemeteries. So they've been using their budget. Where's the money from the cemetery funds? We don't know. Other fu, we found another, we heard about another fund that they had had some emergency funds put away for the employees who had emergencies. That was brought up. We don't have accounting of what we do have. So until we ha, know what we got, I think it's really frivolous whether the, the number the lady gave us or not. And it, 'cause the counties don't have the same expenses we have. It's irrelevant. We are not taking advantage of getting the monies that we can collect and saving the monies we can save, such as on postage. And those are just a couple of things. Everybody up here can come up with their own things.
Thank you. Thank you very much. I can really do that. I do like the idea of electronic billing. I think that, that could save us money, but that, there's probably a fee involved with that. So the money you might save in, in postage, you might, I, I don't know what it is. I don't, I don't know what it is, you don't, none of us do without looking at it. Um, I think Ms. Oglesby can talk about, she and I have talked about a forensic audit since, since I was elected. And finding of somebody to do a forensic audit is a lot harder than, than anybody might would imagine. We've been, she's been looking for that. Um, so she can address that better than I can. You are right, we, we do have an issue with funds that maybe the cemetery fund, maybe the other funds that have been put into the general fund and with, with, I don't, I don't know specifically where the cemetery fund money has gone, but I, that's just an example, that we've, we've, for years now, money's been put into the general fund and not earmarked. And that is a problem, that's one of the reasons we need a forensic audit. Go, Ms. Oglesby?
Well, what I was gonna say about your cemetery fund, just to, to kind of put that to the bed, you, like I said, like Council Macklemore indicated, you do have money that is coming in to, um, pay for the, um, maintenance of those funds. And generally, with those types of account, you use the interest that you earn off the money that you receive to do the maintenance for those cemeteries. Um, Public Works do provide the service, but we only budget a thousand dollars for that. I mean, even if you say, well, you got manpower that goes towards that, again, you're only budgeting, um, a thousand to handle that service, which I have talked to, the treasurer to say that when it comes to those expenses, we do need to have those expenses paid against, um, that account. Because it, if not, it looks like it's an account off the books when we know it's not because money is coming in from selling of those plots to be able to handle both of those things. Um, I will also say too, um, like Mr. Macklemore said, these are options. There are other, uh, combinations that could've come up in our previous discussions. Um, but again, I put these to council to give some, some thought because in our previous discussion, we hadn't reached or decided on too much anything in terms of trying to eliminate or even discussing a couple of things. on too much anything in terms of trying to eliminate or even discussing a couple of things uh in terms of you all would like to see the reduction of the budget. I will say this, we go to adoption on the ninth. So we do need to have some decision made because we need to have a balanced budget when you go to adopt the budget.
That's right. Yes, please.
So I just wanna say thank you for the options. And I actually agree with Mr. Macklemore too. If anyone on council feels that they have a, a better solution to add to the list, I'm open to hearing that. Um, I just tend to trust people that I feel like have expertise in the area, such as the Director of Finance, who I know who has been working diligently alongside of you, who has a background in finance, to kind of come up with these things and allow us to have these options. And if we feel like something is wrong or off or could be done better, then we should definitely be vocal about that, bring it before council so that we can add on to this list. But I'm grateful for the five that I see because I believe that due di- due diligence has been put into the background in bringing these five options. But I'm definitely open, Mr. Macklemore, if you would like to do your research to add on to this list before the ninth to um see if we can come up with a solution or option um that's better than the five that are on this list.
Well, since you, since you-
Excuse me.
I was gonna speak. Which you did, but um I, I wanted to comment on what Ms. Banks just said. We, we pay the city manager to be our professional staff, to be our, our eyes and ears to the budget, our eyes and ears to the, to the operations of the city. We, we set policy, we set, we pass laws, we, we, but, but it is the city manager's job to, to do the day-to-day operation of the city. I also agree with Ms. Banks that if any of the council members can come up with some different options, these were just options given to us, and it was a wide range of options. The amount of money we would generate from taxing, and I, I don't disagree that we should tax the, the, the rides and we should tax, we should make sure, years ago, when I was working with Fall Festival years ago in the nineteen nineties, every vendor, the Commissioner of Revenue sent a notice to every re- vendor, in fact, we sent it out with the application that you had to, you had to collect sales tax. And that sales tax had to be turned over to the city, reported and turned over to the city. That is fallen by the wayside over the years and it, it, it should not. The only thing we're doing now is the food tax, the food vendors.
No, you do both. If they're selling, if they're selling merchandise, they also get to form-
I'm sorry.
To do sales, so they do sales and the food and beverage.
So that is taken care of already. It's the, but, but when the carnival comes to town and things like that, we, I can't imagine we would generate a tremendous amount of money, but it would, but it would, it would generate money. That's right. Go ahead.
Three hundred and twelve thousand dollars, at least we have a specific number. If you go and you go to that carnival and you spend twenty-five, thirty dollars trying to win a teddy bear, that is not food. They should be paying-
I don't think there's-
Revenue on all the revenue that they generate, they should be paying a tax on.
Sales tax, right.
Now, it is up to the city manager. I do, I agree with you. The city managers should be responsible for finding every avenue of revenue that we can possibly generate. The carnival is just one. One that stood out to me. How many other ways can we generate funds for the city? And there's justification, everybody won't like it, but it's better, I think, than always, well, we gonna have to raise taxes. It's bad enough if you go, and then we don't even know about the accounting of if you go to one restaurant, fast food restaurant, and you buy something for three dollars, what is it gonna be with tax? And then you go buy three dollars at another fast food restaurant and the tax is different. What's up with that? It's not supposed to be. It's supposed to be a uniform amount. Nobody, to my knowledge, is mo- monitoring it. I spoke with the Commissioner of Revenue about the uh, she, I said, did you talk to Suffolk about the um, uh, taxes on these rides and stuff? She said, oh, they, they, uh, no, uh, but they charge admission tax. Well, we can't charge admission tax because we don't, city council hasn't passed it. I said, well, why don't you bring it before council? She said, oh, I'll take it to the city manager. Commissioner of Revenue is elected, just like we are. She can say, I need to seek the council because we need a tax. The city needs money. My job is Commissioner of Revenue, so I think we can make money to this. But one of the problems we have, and that's why, as much as I hate it, Mr. Johnson, that I'm not necessarily in oppose to Richmond coming in here. Because we're not doing what we need to do. And a lot of times, it's because the people that are in position don't know to do it. We don't have people, and we have a lot of people, and in the past, which Ms. Oglesby was able to discover, we hire people who are not qualified for the position that they get. So they don't know what they, you know, they don't, they're nice people, but they don't know what they're doing. But because they get the title, we assume they know what they're doing. So I think that when we look at raising taxes on our citizens, we are taking advantage of a power that we have without exercising due diligence to make sure we are doing everything that we can to protect them from having to pay more money. Because they already don't have no movie theater. They already don't have lots of luxuries that other cities do have.
We can't build a movie theater.
No, we can't build a movie theater, but we can have program, we can try to create programs that will get grants. I've been begging, Mr. Johnson been begging for a grant writer. Do we have it yet? We, we talk, but we don't have it. They could be applying for grants to help us with buildings. So move on, is keep having people don't know what they're doing, running things. Bring Richmond in.
I think our city manager does know what she's doing, and I think that there's not anybody on this council who isn't, is, doesn't have our ears to the grind, nose to the grindstone. And some of us are newer than others, but that's the election process. Not everybody's gonna bet on council, um, because we, we hear about it every meeting, the, the new council members, the new council members, the new council members.
Can I just say something?
Sure.
So I actually did do my research about a grant writer because I've heard Council Macklemore said time after time, and I know it was budgeted to twenty thousand. But unfortunately, I just wanna bring this to our awareness, a lot of grants are being cut right now. Um, so it might not actually be in our best interest to hire a grant writer at this moment because a lot, a lot of federal um grants are being cut. I think we should kind of already be aware of that because one of our federal grantee's been kind of on the list to hold up, I think with the radio project, um, am I correct, city manager?
Yes, we have not received our um approval for that. The housing is still, I mean, the one that's coming out of hood, we haven't, they haven't touched it, but that could be touched, the one that's gonna help out with the Amory. We are aware of other pass-through funds that come from this, the federal government to the state to us that is potentially on that list. Unfortunately, I was going to send you all an email regarding this with the airport lost some funding as well. Um, recently a hundred and fifty K. So um there are cuts that are happening um in terms of that, but I do wanna say this. In terms of your part-time grant writer, there was twenty thousand dollars in the budget to bring somebody on to do the twenty thousand dollars, which I have stress with council, that's not enough. But even for this budget, um, by the time the budget got loaded up for twenty-five, the twenty thousand dollars was not loaded up for the grants position. So although you all may have approved, that it was never put into the budget once it was loaded up. This current year that we're on.
Here we're in.
Um, i- i- if I can say this, um, I spoke to several grant writers that are getting money for other cities now. Uh, even with the cuts. There's state, there's federal, and there's private funds. Those three things they're working on, and they're getting money for their cities. There is it's a, your grant rider is a good thing. The city will get more money where we don't have to raise taxes on our citizens from grants. Whatever's going on in the previous administration, tha- that's not gonna last. But basically, we have, we need to get the money that's out there to help so we don't have to, perhaps next year, we, we can get more grants uh to cut that four cents, uh basically, that we don't have to tax citizens. But right now, if we don't take action in getting a grant writer, we're not going to move forward financially with that, there's no extra money. We have all the money that's coming in now. We know what that is, basically. And we need extra money. That is the extra process of getting money for the city. If not, you know what we're dealing with.
One thing to consider, you done?
Uh, uh, no.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, and I was going to say, well, p- p- please, please let me finish. I'm going to say, basically, I have trust in our city manager. The examples that they've given, that we asked for, basically. Uh, because we can't control, we don't do day-to-day operations. We can't control that. Things are happening every day that we, we get a report on, but we, we don't know it. They do.
Absolutely.
So basically, I trust them and their decisions in bringing this forward for us. But the bottom line is the four pennies. I don't know, pull a rabbit out the hat, uh, uh, but we have to get the four pennies. If not, we're in trouble. And believe me, I know what you're saying, Mr. Macklemore, but you don't want to see the state coming in to run the city. Because we're, you're talking about other options, they might say twelve pennies at one time. And, and we can't, we have no decision to stop them. So when, when you give up your power and authority, you become useless. We, we're just here. Uh, but ask Petersburg, ask Hopewell. It's coming-
Richmond.
And they, I've talked to them and they will tell you, the state does not play.
Okay.
I was just gonna ask, do you have the names of referrals for the grant writers that we can have along for this meeting?
Well, I have, I will pass it along to the city manager because I don't want to give out those grant writers because that there's, they work for other people and confidentiality. You know, they might come back and, you know, someone says, and I don't want to get them in trouble.
One thing I wanted to, to, to mention about grants, and I believe this is still true. When I was writing grants at the Sheriff's Department, and that's been a long time ago, a lot of things have changed in thirty-some years. But grants could not be used for operational money. Tip- typically, it was used for special projects generally, weren't they?
It, it actually depends on the grant that you're going for. There is the um ability to charge for indirect costs, and, and generally, those indirect costs pertain to what, let's say, the finance department um may be doing to help with processing. Some gra- the Commissioner of Revenue assess, they don't propose. So one of the things that um I was going to do, and I had mentioned to Heather at our last discussion when Mr. Macklemore had brought it up, was for them to work on um bringing back a proposal. And it's gonna be an off-cycle proposal to implement the admission tax so that you can have that in place to start charging for that. But that's gonna happen probably around July, August, and put that on the agenda for you all to vote.
Very good. Very good.
We kind of went around somehow. Uh, Mr. Kitchen. I agree with you. First of all, I don't, let me make it perfectly clear. I don't want to see the state coming in. I don't want that. What I'm saying is I also don't want our citizens to continue, keep suffering because we aren't doing what we need to do. Now, I'm not saying that I don't have, or I don't, I'm not gonna, I, I hate when people get up and candy coat stuff just to be polite. And that's part of my problem. I just say what I feel, and it offends people. I don't mean to, but it does. Three hundred and twelve thousand dollars, I keep coming to that because that's why we're hearing what we're talking about. If we've got fifty thousand from admissions tax and a hundred and fifty thousand from grants, then we are two hundred thousand dollars. So we're not, we only talking about a hundred and twelve, a hundred and twelve thousand. But when we say, uh, uh, and then you could take down some more, because again, if that number's right, which I'm not sure, do you know how much we spend in postage a, a month?
Not offhand, no.
Okay. If we, if, if it's right, and we spending five thousand dollars a month in postage, multiply that by twelve, how much is that? Sixty, sixty thousand more?
Was that five thousand just for the utility bills?
Yeah, yeah, for the utility bills, coming out. Now, then there's another fee that we all still gonna have to possibly pay for, for the processing and the printing of the bills without the postage. So when we add up all that money, multiply by twelve, we just brought that three twelve down again. Now, when we come up with methods to raise money, then we don't have to worry about taking it from our citizens. That's all I've been saying.
But the only way cities can raise money is through taxes and fees.
Your admission taxes, stop spending money, you, if we, a penny saved is a penny earned. Greg didn't make that up. So if we're spending on postage, then that's money we don't have to take from our taxes, from our citizens.
Yeah, we have a service, but it's part of that, part of their fees are-
We pay, we're paying the postage. They not gonna pay the postage for us.
No, but it's part of the fee that they charge us.
It, it gotta be.
Yes, I receive my bill electronically.
Well, then, then we need, one thing, we need to make that clear. And we need to try to implement it. You know, um, I didn't get, you, you know, I didn't get my bill. Well, we, we sent it to your email. All citizens who have email, you're required to submit your email with your utility. We can try to help because it cuts down on our expense and subsequently on their expense. So we can push to get money, is all I'm saying. And these are just two, two, three things? How many more? We're ju- we're just dealing with a, a, a tower issue. But four or five years ago, we went through this. I said, y'all, we should do our own tower. We can be the renters.
We're buying, buying it now.
But now, we're finally, five years down the road, after we done spent money, spent money, then all of a sudden, now this body says, okay, we're gonna get our own tower. Yeah, yeah, we did something right. Because we've been wasting money. And all I'm saying is, as we, as we move forward, we have to start thinking outside the box. We cannot, we, and I say the council, because we were the ones elected by the people. We got to come up with ideas. And then have the city manager implement them along with ideas that she brings to us. And between her ideas and our ideas, instead of just leaving it in the hands of the professionals, because we don't know that they're always that professional. We had a lady stood before us-
Three master's degrees.
Which one?
Three, uh, finance.
Yeah, I don't know how many degree, but had never worked with a city in her life. Ms. Oglesby was able to spot it. She didn't know nothing about municipal finance. But she was hired as a finance director.
That's not tough.
So-
Personnel issues.
Bottom, uh, oh.
I, I just said that. I just said that.
So all I'm saying is, I can't see these us ready to pick options and say, okay, Ms. Oglesby, let's go with two and five.
Well, we do have to make a decision by our next scheduled meeting, so.
So I'll say this, fiscal year is July. We have a retreat coming up, and maybe we can plan successfully with all of these ideas for the upcoming year. I think that, once again, you did a wonderful job. This is your first budget created for us in this role as city manager. We cannot continue to go back to the past and previous councils and bodies. All we can do is work-
Is what we can do.
From this point on, with who we have, and I think we have someone wonderful as well as the body that's represented here tonight. I think that everybody on this, there's our wonderful people and can do this. So um we have to go, we can't run a bunch of hypotheticals at this point. I believe we have to make a decision with what we have now, and moving forward, we have to do better. But the time is crunching, so something in my- But the time is crunching, so something in my opinion needs to be done now.
I think we should, somebody should, I'd like to propose that we do a consensus on options. Any thoughts on that?
I think we ought to do a consensus on getting some more money immediately, like yesterday.
Well, that's what we're doing.
Like, like, find out tomorrow how much would this, this postage thing?
But that's, that.
So if we.
That's for the future. We, we can't.
But it's, it's the twelve, it's the three twelve now.
But the postage is not gonna be enough. Even with the admission, when I listen to everything you said today, it still does not, it's not equivalent to three hundred thousand dollars. Postage, even if the carnival came tomorrow and we had sales tax, it would not.
And that's just what Greg came up with. What, you're gonna come up with?
Well, I, I'm okay with the option.
No, I'm talking about a way.
Okay, okay, let's not argue amongst ourselves.
We're not arguing, discussing.
So I think that on the retreat in the next, the next, by the next budget cycle, I can promise you that I will have other options. Right now, I.
To raise money for the city.
Right now, I am choosing to take the expertise of our Director of Finance and our City Manager. Going forward, if you would like to work together to come up with some ideas to generate revenue for the city.
I didn't gave you three or four. You come up with something. I'm only one person.
That's right.
You're right.
Thank God. All right. I personally like option two.
Well, I think, Mr. Mayor, we need to do something now.
That's what I'm proposing.
Yeah, and, and, I know, and option two, it seems to be the best option.
It, it splits the, splits the tax up two different ways. Gives a little relief to the, to people paying out of pocket. Ms. Kitchen?
Still saying two and five, and leaning toward five.
Okay. Ms. Banks?
Two, but if she can come up with something to incorporate five, I would not be opposed to include five.
Ms. Copley?
As well as if she can come up with something, I'm not opposed to five also.
Can, can we cut money from number five? I mean, take, reduce the amount we're paying to the school system for that SOQ without, it still save us money? Even if we go with number two?
Even if you go with number two, you're saying still do the food and beverage increase and, and still provide the real estate increase?
Yeah.
You could still propose in terms of this portion to lure the schools' allocation for twenty-six.
In other words, maybe not the whole amount, but.
That's what I'm saying, how much would you want to reduce from the one point eight nine?
Fifty percent?
No, I would say don't touch it. I would say number two, and, and we can, and we'll be fine.
My, my, my biggest concern with number five is it's, it's the most needy students.
I agree, Mr. Mayor.
Um, can, can, can I ask, can I ask somebody that knows more about school expenses?
I'm going with number two. That's my final.
Same here.
Okay.
It's mine too.
Can I ask somebody from the gallery?
This is your meeting.
Okay, our meeting, okay. It is my meeting, it is our meeting. All right, two, mixture?
Two.
Ms. Banks? Two, two, two.
My question is, why can't we reduce five by three hundred and twelve dollars? I mean, three hundred and twelve thousand, brings us down to fifteen eighty. So we aren't taking away the whole eighteen ninety-two.
Fifteen five, fifteen five.
Brings it, so just get the three twelve from that. Why can't we do that?
The ATM, right? We don't know what that final number is in June.
Still, just get it from there.
Yeah, but if the ADM.
Is the justification for the four cents, correct?
If, if the ADM goes up to eleven hundred and thirteen students. Correct.
Hold on, explain it, we're gonna owe what? But right now, with the ADM we got now, we, we're talking about cutting them, reduce local match for nonprofit programs. Reduce.
Not non-profi, non-SOQ.
It's reducing it, right? So if it goes up, we still can reduce three hundred and twelve dollars, three hundred and twelve thousand from that amount, can't we?
How, how much was it if it was the full eleven hundred thirteen students? What was the difference?
So if it goes up to two million eight hundred ninety-two thousand.
But this is only a part of the budget, that's, that's only a part of their budget, not.
So, so, and I don't have it broken out between the SOQ and the non-SOQ, but the bottom line came up to five point two if it's the full one thousand one hundred and thirteen. So my guesstimate that this will probably be roughly about three point eight, three point nine for the required SOQ, and then the difference is for the non-SOQ funded positions, I mean, programs.
We got it from the, there's certain programs we got funds.
Those are the SOQ.
And you're saying, these are the ones we don't have to fund, correct?
These are the ones that you could do some reduction to.
So we don't have to do this eighteen, one million eight hundred, right? We don't have to.
You.
The money we got to work with, because that was an option.
Let me take you back to this so you see it. So here, they, they can opt out if you're not going to provide the match for these and, and this program when it comes to Virginia preschool initiative. It just gets down to, for these areas, the schools are gonna have to make an adjustment in providing these programs. So it's gonna affect the programs they can provide, that's non-SOQ programs.
Yeah, I don't, I don't wanna.
And you're saying if you intend, the you, is the schools or?
So they're saying that, so once they, like, that's why I showed you this sheet. Once they indicate, they said that the city gave, and I'm gonna stick with what we, what I recommended, the four point eight for twenty-six. The required local effort is two point nine seven. So that leaves them with one eight nine two to be able to provide funding for Virginia preschool initiative and these programs here. And so.
Preschool initiative is just, is.
So the preschool initiative for next year is one twenty-nine, three six five. So if, if you did that, then what that leaves is, you know, and you can start seeing where, based off of the amount of money, the one point eight that's there, how it starts dropping off, and where it caps off where they may not. But again, like I said, it's up to them how they're gonna fund it. Unless they, if it was the infrastructure operations per pupil funding, they don't have enough to match, provide that match. They don't have enough to provide the special education add-ons, so.
This compensation supplement, that's what I would pick off.
So it's, it's, you mean, the, you won't, you removed the hundred and eighty K?
No, the eighty-five.
No, you're off alone, aren't you?
You, you know, I'm talking about twenty-six.
Twenty-six.
Not twenty-five, twenty-six.
Come over to the far side.
Yeah. No, 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 that's, so after they meet these matches, so if they say, well, okay, we're gonna, out of the one eighty-nine, they take out the one twenty-nine to fully meet preschool initiatives. Then if they say, we're gonna do one hundred percent the at-risk, then that leaves five hundred and twenty-seven available. So they could move to early reading specialists, at least five hundred and one. If they do K three, it drops it down available for them to use, three oh six. Fifty to meet for the specialist, okay, they got two fifty-six left. Now, when they get the compensation supplement, if they meet that one hundred percent, it drops it down to seventy-seven thousand dollars that they have available to try to meet between the infrastructure and operations per pupil funds and the special education add-ons. So these numbers can be adjusted based off of once they have identified how much the required local effort is, and it may be, they may not try to meet at the full match all of these. It's gonna impact some of the services that they're going to provide if this was to get reduced. So even if you went and you said that I recommend instead of giving them, and basically, if I, I wanna give them the extra one point eight, I wanna give them one point five. So you're taking out three hundred or something that Mr. McLemore said. It's gonna be keeping in mind that if they try to put that extra money towards one of those initiatives, if the ADM go up on your required local effort, it may impact, again, they may have to go back and reduce some of those programs and what they provide, or they may come back and say, can you all give us the money?
But can, also, what I just gave, I mentioned earlier, they give, they give their full-time employees four thousand three hundred, I think, annual bonuses.
Well, they did it one year.
They did it this year. So, so they can find a way to fund those programs that need to be funded for the children. They just might not be able to do the things that they did this year.
So I have a question, I wanna understand this. It's kinda like a gamble, in my opinion. And, and please correct me if I'm wrong, I just want it for clarity purposes. It's like a gamble. So there is a possibility, if the ADM goes up, they're gonna, they may need this funding. But here's my question. If the ADM does not go up and we approve this, they just still, they get to keep this extra money to do, say for instance, what Mr. McLemore just said, which is to give bonuses and whatever else they need to do. Is that correct? Like, if we approve this tonight without any cuts, and they don't meet the ADM requirement, then the reduction is there, but the funding has already been budgeted. So if, am I understanding, I just need to be clear about that.
So this calculation that the state puts together, it identifies both what the federal, the state, and the localities are required to provide for the SOQ and what they will have available if the school choose to use the option on those non-SOQ programs. And so, and, and like I said, the calculation in it, it says it's just a template to identify how much the schools need to provide the education. And so, as long as the schools report that they're meeting their required local effort for those SOQ programs, with the funding that they receive, and I'm not, and by me stating this, I'm not saying they taking the money to do other things than other than what's on that sheet.
But they could.
Um, they could.
The, um.
But we don't actually pay them the money until those, those numbers come out, right?
No, so when the, the year starts, the city pays them quarterly.
Right.
Provides it, provides it quarterly to them, for them to be able to spend and provide the services for, for that year. And I'm keeping it that way and not trying to be a little bit more too complicated with another comment or.
Can we get the numbers before, I need to know when we have the ADM before this budget is approved.
No, ma'am.
No, no.
Because the, the state, the state said they're not going to release until sometime in June. If you look at their history when it comes to the General Assembly, depending on how many days that they have, it usually come out either the, the second or third week. The other problem that we're running into, and councils prior have, have not met this, but typically, your budget is supposed to be passed by May fifteenth because the schools have to turn in their budget to the state. But because the General Assembly and the governor did not approve the budget until much later.
State budget.
It kinda gave us, yeah, the state budget much later, kinda gave us some leeway. That's why next year, I'm not planning for you all to adopt in June, I'm planning for you to adopt in May, move this up so that you can meet that deadline regardless of what the General Assembly does and what the governor does.
Um, well, well, excuse me, had to finish.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry.
Okay. No, excuse me. Well, that's the reason why I say option two is the best option for us. Then we don't have to go through the other aspects of that. And as far as the extra bonuses last year that were given was caused basically that the schools are in competition with the other schools around us for teachers. And that was just an incentive to get some teachers to come to the city of Franklin.
Or to stay.
And, and to stay. Because in the past, teachers have came in to the city Franklin, and then they go to Suffolk and other areas, basically, because they're paying more money. And we're surrounded by other school systems that are getting more money and paying more money because they have a larger population and so forth.
Bigger tax base.
So we have to look at it, so you have to have something to balance that off. You have to dangle some carrot to lure some of the good qualified teachers here in the city of Franklin. If not, you, you, you're gonna have sub, 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 sub teaching.
And if I may add too, I think also too, Dr. Carter had indicated that they received some grants that allowed them to be able to provide those one-time bonuses. And I, and I think they also used some grant funds to provide reoccurring expenses as well in terms of increases to persons' salaries. But they had available funds to be able to do those things.
We're necessarily city money, I'm sorry.
Another big reason the teachers leave because they don't have any support from the administration. It's all about money.
I, I, I am all for, so it's not twisted. I'm glad they got the bonuses. I wanna see them get the bonuses. I just wish our, our employees could get bonuses like that as well. They're managing their money, they're getting grants to get money to help their teacher. I wanna see them get that. However, I like option six, if I'm understanding, or maybe I'm getting it wrong, because it's not up there, that's why I said.
Okay.
Option six is reduce this three twelve by, uh, uh, by that amount there, that school amount. Am I understanding, we can't do that?
I'm not agreeing with, but if they do get the ADM, then we may have to pay back. So that's why the combination of two and five are the best.
Well, well, what I'm trying to do is either one of those are increases to our general citizens. Now, I love kids, I think our children are our future. However, Ms. Johnson, you got any kids in the school system? That's it, be easy.
Well, I have kids in the school system.
I didn't know you had children.
Relatives and so.
No, I said, do you have children in the school system?
I have, I don't have any kids.
Okay, answer, that's, that's fine.
Biologically in the school system.
Okay, so you have stepchildren.
But neither does you.
Exactly, I agree, I agree. Now, Ms. Kitchen, do you have any kids in the school system? Uh, Ms. Ms. Banks, do you have any? Nobody. You have two children in the school system? Bonus children. You got kids in the school system? You got constituents, he has constituents. You have constituents. We have constituents that outweigh considerably the number of children we have in our schools. Those wonderful young men that came before us, did you notice the, the, the patches on their new jackets, on their jackets? Champions, whatever.
Yes, 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 they did.
Do you think that was free?
No, it was not free.
Probably guarantee you the parents.
Okay, and every time, I don't think the parents probably paid extra for that. Maybe they did, but I don't think they did. And I've been to school.
I think that's it, boosters paid for that.
School board minute, I've been to school, okay, school boosters can give, give money. Um, I've been to school board meetings, they give everybody all kinds of awards and new stuff. I see our city, I see a brand-new employee got a city shirt on. I don't think she paid for it.
She's not brand-new.
Shirt, she ain't been here that long.
It's not a new shirt.
My point is, we spend money on things because we get the money from the taxpayers. All I'm saying is, I ain't trying to raise four cents to come up with three twelve unless we can find ways to save money. Mister, the mayor, I don't think he got his jacket yet. Why not? He deserves a jacket. What I'm saying is whether it's, well, fine, or you can sacrifice your pay too, you can do that. But, because some, and some of us need it and some of us don't. That's an option. All I'm saying is, we have to try to find ways to save money. And if we can get some money from that eight, one million eight hundred ninety-two thousand dollars, we don't have to hit your constituents, your constituents, your constituents, your, ours. That's all I'm saying. I'm not for just, because we can, take the money with option two and five.
I don't think we're doing anything just because we can.
That's option five, and then the ADM increases.
I wouldn't say two is option five.
Hold on, hold on. Where would we get the funds from? That's my, that's my question, yeah.
Okay. Let, let's, let's go back to, we're, we're, let's. Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I thought it was a rhetorical question.
Someone answer the vice mayor's question, please.
I, I, I think we're gonna have to, we're gonna be. I don't, I, I, I think we're gonna have to, we're gonna be in a pickle.
No, I mean, it will come off of your revenue that you have coming in, that you approve for that year. And you will hope that enough comes in to, to meet it. And it, and it may not. And so therefore.
Well, it may.
Yes, it, it may, it may, or it may not. Um, but that's a risk you're going to be taking, um, when it comes to that. You know that, we all know that when there's, when they don't spend all their money at the end of the year, it is supposed to come back, uh, to the city. So.
There will be Russian roulette, that's a gamble.
That's right.
That, that, that we don't wanna do.
Only gamble, we, only thing.
We're not in the gambling business.
Ms. Gris, and I think we've gotten to everybody on this, uh, options. What, what is your thought on options?
I still personally prefer option two with an addition of option five in there as well. Um, if we wanted to set an amount, I would say drop the real estate increase to one percent or one point five and take the rest from option five.
Okay. All right. Consensus vote again.
Option two.
Option two, option two and five mixture.
The last time, option two and five leaning toward option five.
Gotcha.
Option two and five for me.
Two and five with the, uh, real estate reduction. The same or not, I disagree with that one percent.
One, that's, we're bringing down to one and a half percent.
That's actually another option. That's a six. And I go with option seven.
Okay. So I can go with what Mr. Gris suggested. I like that, that. But be conservative what we take from, from.
But be, be understanding what y'all saying.
No, I, I.
Y'all are for raising, raising taxes.
I, I am, yes, sir, yes, sir.
So, so if I'm hearing this correct, so let me just say this about this, this option combining of two and five. That you would do the one percent for the meals tax of food and beverage, that you would do one cent on a real estate tax.
Oh, I think it's a one and a half, wasn't it?
One, it was, I, I just heard one cent.
I thought it was a cut in.
And so I did the one cent and so that was, uh, uh, one cent on the tax is gonna bring in an extra seven hundred and seventy-seven thousand, seven hundred and seventy-five dollars. So then you're saying to the schools, reduce their, reduce their amount by a hundred and eighteen thousand, three hundred and twenty-five dollars.
I can go with that. What's that?
I, I just disagree because what if you have to put this money back in five? Right now it's a risk. We either gonna come out good. If we don't come out good, it is really like a gamble. If we do not, if we do not come out good with this ADM or whatever else they need, we still are gonna need to get the three hundred thousand from somewhere. So I say we'll either come out on overly on top if we do two and five as is. And that's just my opinion. I know we wanna reduce the real estate tax more, but we have reduced it, but we need to also give ourselves some cushion as a city just in case this thing backs fires with.
That's the reason why, that's the reason why I say option two. If not, we're playing Russian roulette. And the AD, uh, the ADM has always came out late and we've always had to pay more money. And believe me, if you go the other way, you're gonna have to pay the money back. I guarantee it.
Mr. Johnson, what does ADM stand for?
Average daily.
Did I ask y'all?
I'm sorry.
Damn. I asked Mr. Johnson.
Control, control yourself.
I'm sorry.
Okay.
So I would say I'm going back, I'm, I'm recanting number two as is and five. And that's, um, that's, that's my five.
So we're saying option two.
I know you said and five as is, so then it's option two.
Yes.
Two and five, reduce local match and number two.
So, so then, so we're, we're leaving number two as is and reduce option five by how much?
I would say four, at least four hundred thousand. When I did that, from what you showed on that other slide, it would leave like a four hundred.
Reduce about four hundred thousand?
You saying reduce the one point eight down about four hundred.
And I disagree with that. Keep it at two, you know what you, you know what you got. You do anything else, you don't know what you have.
Get back to, get back to two.
Which one you wanna go back to? Right there. No, the one, I'm sorry. All right, so then, that one point eight, that bottom number, right? That was also on the other one too, yeah. Okay, I'm sorry. Go back to one. You said, oh, I know I got that, because you said it's three five, right? So what I would project it was three five?
So this projection is one thousand fifty-seven point seven five students. The state's five.
Which would give us, you said three five.
I say it could either be in terms of the required local match could go up to either three point eight, three point nine. I really don't know. I will have to go back and get that number for you.
I, I'm still with two.
Same here.
The reason I say two is, is again, Russian roulette is just, I, I agree with Ms. Johnson. Um, I, I would like to cut the fat out of the school system's budget, but I don't think we can do it till we know where their money is, is sitting and that we need to, we need to, um, pursue that potential forensic audit for both the city and the school system.
I'm, I'm a little lost. So, and you, this I take for granted, you know more about Ms. Banks than I do because you sat on the school board.
Oh, Ms. Banks.
Concede, it's great.
Right, Ms. Banks, thanks, I wrote it down.
I concede you, you know more about this. But I feel our responsibility, the school board and the superintendent are responsible for making their ends meet. I thought our responsibility was to the entire city and our constituents. So the only thing we are concerned with is three hundred and twelve dollars, I mean, three hundred and twelve thousand dollars. So I don't see why we are getting stuck in a dilemma of how the school is gonna spend their money. I think that should be left up to the school.
I don't think we are. I think we're in a dilemma is what happens if we end up with a one thousand one hundred and thirteen students at the end of the year? And if we've cut, if we've cut out of their budget, we're gonna, it's that much more we're gonna have to pay back that we don't have, that we don't have budget for.
I thought this is.
That's right.
I, I, Ms. Banks, again, you, you, she's school board. Ms. Grant.
Banks.
So this is not required from us, correct? If it's not required, why are we going back and forth?
Look what it pays for.
So four hundred thousand?
So back me, back me. That's, that's, this, we are responsible, three hundred and twelve thousand dollars. We can save our citizens three hundred and twelve thousand dollars if we take three hundred and twelve thousand dollars from the school money and we still, we didn't take the one point eight. We give them, we still got one point five million. But three hundred thousand saves our constituency. Cause we're not required to give it. Next year we got more money because we did the amusement tax and we did the, the, the postage and we did this and we did that and other thing. We got more money, but right now we don't. So instead of raising taxes with two, which increases the food tax and, and the real estate tax, why we increase tax on our constituents? Let the school board deal with how the schools meet their requirements with the money that we are required to give them.
Thank you. As always, we're giving in to the school system. We don't wanna hurt anybody's feelings.
I, I voted for the last time.
So for me though, it's beyond the people we dislike. It's the students at the.
Yes, the students, all about students.
I mean, that are at the top of the chain for me. So I can't hold a personal vendetta forever and penalize the kids. I am an educator and work with children every single day. I wouldn't dare, despite my, despite how I may feel about the talk, I still would not want to withhold so much funding from our teachers, staff and students at the end of the day that really are the most important things.
That's right. And I hope, I'm sorry.
And I think we gotta really look at that bigger picture and not the micro, um, pixels. We have to look at the big picture here. The kids, at the end of the day, still need their funding. Some kids don't eat, they depend on school meals. Some kids.
I, I'm for the kid, I'm all for the kids.
I hold no personal vendetta. If they worried about those kids paying the price, six months ago should have been the, the time to think about it.
I agree with Ms. Banks, uh, Councilwoman Banks. Uh, we ha, it's, it's about the kids. We can't, it's not about us, it's about the kids. We have to do what's best for the kids. And we have some kids that really need help in the school system and looking at the programs that, that we would be funding. They are necessary for those kids to move forward with their education. Without that, they would, they would be, um, it would be detrimental to the kids.
So what's it say, we give them the money, the whole thing?
Give it to them.
Until we negotiate on two hundred thousand, if four hundred thousand is too much, then two hundred thousand reduce. So keeping two as is and reducing five by two hundred thousand.
I think that would give us some buffer.
Thank you.
It, it, I, I mean, since y'all are determined to raise taxes, I, I support raising two cents rather than four cents. But I'm not, I don't want to raise taxes on our citizens. That's just.
But, but my bottom line, but my bottom line, I've said this. If you're not dealing with four pennies, we're not getting it done.
That's right.
Point blank. If you're not dealing with the four pennies.
Really and truly, we probably need to vote, to, to be voting for eight or ten cents, but we can't afford to do that.
Yeah, yeah. It, it should be twelve.
No, it should be bring more money into the city.
Well, that, that.
Well, certainly, by all due respect, because you kind of went off earlier, you should have been there, you're the council senior council.
They did the same thing when I did it with the other council. I did it with the other council.
Okay, folks, okay, folks, okay, folks.
And they did like y'all. They ignored me.
Okay, all right.
We cleaned up his mess.
Okay. I. I, I don't know we're gonna come to an agreement, but.
That's the reason why I said two and we move forward.
I go with two.
We just kick, keep kicking the can.
Two and reduce five by two hundred thousand, final answer from me.
Ms. Copeland?
Uh, two.
Two. Three twos. I know you don't abstain.
I'm not raising taxes.
I like Ms. Banks's idea. I still like to do something with the school system.
So we're three and three. Three and three.
Which means we don't have.
A consensus.
A consensus.
Right. Someone has to change.
So y'all have changed what you believe to get the meeting along.
And we have to have a budget.
We have to have a budget.
Yeah, we're packed, we have to have a budget.
Okay, 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 folks, I think we've, we've, we've hashed that up for an hour and a half. All right, um, are, are we done with the budget or do you have other?
No, that, that, that was it.
Uh, we need a,
A motion.
A motion for a closed session, please. Who's gonna read it? Okay.
I moved that the City Council of Franklin, Virginia convene to a closed meeting pursuant to Virginia Code, section two point two dash three seven one one A dash one for the purpose of discussion, consideration or interviews of prospective candidates for appointment to Franklin City School Board.
Have a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second and discussion. I'll take the vote. Dr. Johnson?
Aye.
Kitchen?
Aye, aye.
Aye.
And aye. All right. Ladies and gentlemen, we're going to a closed session.